Good afternoon, folks. We're gonna start. Have everyone's attention. Thank you all very much. To our friends and citizens in the audience, sorry for the delay, but this is kinda, we function around here. We always have unforeseen incidents that pop up, but we will try to move this as expeditiously as possible. First of all, I would like to say, for the record, there apparently has been some information that is put out through mass media and regular traditional media and other, that there will be a vote on sugar tax or sugar tax-related activity today. That is not the case. I have no idea where that rumor or that information came from. Was never on the agenda to move sugar tax out today. So for those of you that are anticipating such a vote, that is not scheduled for today. It will happen pretty soon, but not today. So thank you all for your cooperation. We obviously welcome you regardless of why you decided to come down here. We really enjoy you being here. It's a public hearing on the committee of hold regarding bills number 160170, 160171, and 160172, 160173, 160174, 160175, 160176, and resolution number 160180.
16015.
And new bill. And there will be testimony. Do I not have that? And there will be testimony from the administration on bill number 160508 and 160509. Thank you very much. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill number 160170, in order as to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2017 through 2022, inclusive, bill number 160171, in order as to adopt a fiscal 2017 capital budget, bill number 160172, in order as to adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017, bill number 160173, in order as to amending section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 160174, in order as to amending section 19-1801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 160175, in order as to amending chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 160176, in order as to amending title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter 19-4100 entitled Sugar Sweet and Beverage Tax under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 160508, in order as to amending title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter 19-4100 entitled Non-Reusable Beverage Container Tax under certain terms and conditions. Bill number 160509, in order as to authorizing the transfer appropriations for fiscal year 2017 from the General Fund, the Mayor, Office of Community Schools, and Universal Pre-K to the General Fund, the Director of Finance contribution to School District under certain terms and conditions. Resolution number 160180, resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the Mayor on January 3, 1992, bill number 1563-A, by and between the City and the Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today, we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Hold to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2017, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2017 through fiscal First, we will hear testimony from the administration regarding a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2017 capital budget and the fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2022 capital program. Mr. Stitt, can you please call the name of the first witness?
Anna Wallace Adams.
Thank you. How are you?
Hi. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of the committee. My name is Anna Adams, and I'm the City's Budget Director. I'm here today to offer amendments to bill numbers 160170 and 160171, the proposed FY17 to '22 capital program and the FY17 capital budget respectively. On behalf of the administration, I'm requesting these amendments for both technical and programmatic reasons. Importantly, these changes will not impact the amount of general obligation funds contemplated under the bills as originally proposed. From a technical basis, the amounts within the Division of Aviation contain carry-forward amounts that are too high and are proposed to be reduced to match their current progress on spending these funds. The Water Department's federal and state funds are proposed to be adjusted to reflect the most recent grant awards from federal and state entities. The Water Department is in the process of receiving state-sponsored grants in the form of multimodal trust fund grants and federal grants from the Federal Highway Administration in partnership with the Streets Department. The amendment also moves certain titles, OGOVO, FO, and SSO funding sources from the budget ordinance under transit, which are off-budget governmental sources that were previously included in error. From a programmatic basis, the amendment moves $1.3 million worth of funding within the Streets Department from streets reconstruction to $850,000 for critical roof and window replacements within the Traffic Operations Center, $200,000 for traffic control equipment, and $250,000 for street lighting improvements. The amendment also removes $500,000 in planning funds within the City Commissioners' budget in FY17 and '18 intended for the launch of the new voting machines in FY19, which are deemed no longer necessary. An additional $500,000 is proposed to be added to the Commerce Department for Penn's Landing improvements. $1 million in total city funds will leverage Penn dot funds and funding from the William Penn Foundation for a study called the Preliminary Engineering Project, which will be managed by the Delaware River Waterfront Corporation, or DRWC. The study will analyze potential development and improvement options for the Penn's Landing area over I-95 from approximately I-76 interchange south to Washington Avenue. The administration's ITEF line will use $500,000 to support the remainder of the project to ensure that the general obligation-supported capital budget remains neutral. These changes impact the overall FY17 budget with a decrease of $407,94,954 due to the reduction of the carry-forward lines within the Division of Aviation. By proposing these changes to the FY17 budget, the amendment will also decrease the FY17 to '22 capital program by the same amount. I respectfully ask that the committee consider and adopt these proposed amendments. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wallace. Do we have any questions, our members, for Ms. Wallace on the capital program? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. So next up, we'll have Mr. DeBoe and Mr. Tolante to testify on the container tax bill.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark.
Can you hold on one second, please?
Of course.
Folks, we're gonna, real briefly, let me explain what we're gonna do. We have a series of bills that are on the calendar where there's absolutely no controversy, which is, you know, pretty good. So because we have a timeline in term of passing our budget, we're gonna go into a public meeting, and we're gonna move those bills to start the process of moving towards final passage, just to kinda give you a sense of what we're doing. So it's basically real estate taxes. I'm assuming, we're assuming that nobody wants us to raise the real estate taxes. UNO, which is a business tax, the assumption is nobody wants us to raise that. Capital program is pretty consistent with our plan. And wage tax, the assumption is that people want us to continue to lower that. So we're gonna move those non-controversial bills. So at this time, we will briefly recess the public hearing and go to a public meeting to consider the action be taken on bills number 160170, 160171, 160173, 160174, and 160175. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of making a motion to move those bills out of committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that bill number 160170, 160171, 160173, 160174, 167, 160175 be voted out of committee with a favorable recommendation.
Motion to suspend the rules. Councilman, give me a, make a motion for suspending of the rules.
We're gonna suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna vote them out with the suspension of the rules as to be heard at our next council session.
We have to adopt the amendment for the capital. Mr. Stitt, you gotta have me prepared. Oh, okay. So it's my fault. I'm not, I'm not reading my script. It's, it's okay. It's my fault. Got a little bit too much going on right now. All right. So we're, we're still in the public meeting. Here you go. Councilman Heenan, now that we're in a public meeting, I recognize the Councilmember for a motion on the amendment to bill number 160170.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do offer an amendment to bill number 160170. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee, and I move that the adoption of the amendment be voted in.
Second. Thank you. Has been moved in properly. Second, that the amendment to bill number 160170 be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 160170 has been amended, and Chair recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion on bill number 160170 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that bill number 160170, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading of this bill at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the bill number 160170, as amended, be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation, and further be moved that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading at the next session of council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And the motion carries, bill number 160170, as amended, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and request that the rules of council be suspended so as permit first reading at the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion on the amendment to bill number 160171.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer an amendment to bill number 160171. Copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the amendment to bill number 160171 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 160171 has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion on 160171 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that bill number 160171, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading of this bill at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the bill number 160171, as amended, be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation with the suspension of the rules, and that this bill be in favor of this motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes have it. And the motion carries, bill number 160171, as amended, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and request that the rules of council be suspended, permit first reading at the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion on bill number 160173.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that bill number 160173 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the bill number 160173 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended so to permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And the motion carries, bill number 160173, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and request that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading at the next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan, and one more time, for a motion on bills number 160174.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that bill number 160174 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that bill number 160174 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading on this bill next session of council, and those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And the motion carries, bill number 160174, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and a request that rules of council be suspended to permit first reading in the next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion on bill number 160175.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that bill number 160175 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next council session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the bill number 160175 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council be suspended, permit first reading of this bill at the next session of council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And motion carries, bill number 160175, will be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation and a request that rules of council be suspended to permit first reading in the next session of council. I'm good. All right. We have concluded the public meeting. We will now go back into the public hearing, where we will hear testimony on bills number We are reserving June 8th as a day for public testimony in regards to the newly introduced bills. If you wish to testify on these bills, please go to, visit council's website and call the chief clerk for further instructions, or you can obviously call your council member. Mr. Stitt, can you please call the name of the first witness on this bill?
That's the city, I'm sorry, city solicitor.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of the committee of the hold.
Hold on a second. Before, before we take this testimony, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I do have opening remarks on this container bill, if I may.
Absolutely.
I need to say good afternoon to my colleagues and all of those who've joined us this afternoon out of your demanding work schedules to hear how we continue to figure out how we fund the universal quality pre-K, how we fund community schools, and how we rebuild our rec libraries and parks with a guarantee of the inclusion and participation of MBE and WBEs. This afternoon continues that friendly debate. Your opening remarks bear repeating in that we need to apologize for the inaccurate info on social media, which indicated that we might be voting on these bills today. This afternoon, we are calling on my colleagues to not vote on the proposed bills, but simply to hear and listen to the testimony as the homework and the discussion continues. I remain strong in my belief that the ideas up for consideration are all on the table, for my experience tells me when we have multiple ideas on the table, we typically end up with better outcomes for the citizens of our city. And so I am asking my colleagues to do as you always do, maintain an open mind, ask the relevant questions related to this bill, and consider, carefully consider this option along with Mayor Kenny's proposal, as we stack these two options together and seek to win a win-win scenario. In the words of Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, often she says, "This does not have to be an either-or. We can actually end up with an and, a win-win for everybody." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of the committee of the hold. I've been asked by Councilmember Reynolds Brown to present brief testimony on the bill number 160508. That's the non-reusable beverage container tax. And my testimony is very brief because, for the same reasons in which I testified to council before regarding the sugar sweetened beverage tax, I believe strongly that council has authority to enact this measure. We've considered some of the same potential arguments, that is, sales tax, uniformity, and we've, and having reviewed them and looking at the legislation, we're very comfortable that council has this authority, and if there's any challenge, that we'll be ready for it. And I'm happy to take any questions, but I, with the, with the blessing of the council member Reynolds Brown's staff, I prepared an opinion, and she has waived any privilege with respect to that. And so I'm happy to testify regarding any, any, any aspect of that opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Tolante. Mr. DeBoe, you don't, you, you guys are not, you're not testifying?
I am.
On this, on this measure?
Yes.
Yeah. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of the committee. I'm Rob DeBoe, the Director of Finance. I'm joined at the table by Mr. Tolante and Mr. Fader, and close to the table by-
Sorry, this is Richie Fader, I apologize.
Anna Adams, our Budget Director, and Frank Brazan, the Revenue Commissioner. As Mr. Tolante explained, bill 160508 would authorize the imposition of a 15 cent per container tax on non-reusable beverage containers. The bill would tax all containers with the exception of those that contain alcohol, baby formula, any product, the primary ingredient of which is milk, and any non-dairy milk substitute. The proceeds of the tax are intended to provide sufficient resources to fund expanded pre-K, community schools, and substantial new investments in park, recreation, and library facilities. On behalf of the mayor, I acknowledge the difficult task of determining how to generate the funding necessary for those crucial programs. The mayor appreciates in particular the efforts of Councilwoman Bondell Reynolds Brown in crafting and proposing the bill before us. To that end, we have given the bill serious analysis and consideration. The administration does have significant reservations, and for the reasons I'll detail in this testimony, we can't lend our support to the bill. A key concern we have with the legislation is that it's not projected to provide sufficient funding to appropriately fund these programs, or provide, any opportunity to provide the additional dollars to the pension fund. The projections for the amount the bill would, the projections for the amount the bill would produce total slightly over $61 million for a full year. In contrast, when fully implemented, the total cost of the three programs would be $89 million. The shortfall in funding for the three key programs created by the passage of this legislation as opposed to passage of the sugary drinks tax will leave a hole of over $27 million and require the programs to be cut by about 30%. That would likely mean some combination of fewer pre-K slots, less support for providers to become high-quality providers, fewer community schools, and reduced investment in park, recreation, and school facilities, and no contribution to pensions. It's an outcome the administration can't support. We're also concerned about the aggressive nature of the tax. It applies to virtually all containers, making it very difficult to avoid. Of the $61 million in projected revenue, for example, about $16.5 million would come from bottled water. Unlike the sugar sweetened beverage tax, which would leave healthier options untaxed, the container tax would be imposed at the same level on all containers regardless of health or size. Thus, a small juice box or bottle of water would be subject to the same tax as a two-liter bottle of soda. Administration believes it's critical to provide sufficient recurring funding to pre-K, community schools, and rebuilding community infrastructure. We believe the sugary drinks tax is the best and fairest way providing, for providing that revenue. That concludes my testimony, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeBoe. I just had one quick question. So in your fourth paragraph, you talk about the key concern of legislating-
Right.
-not providing sufficient funding to appropriately fund the programs. So basically, you're saying unless you, you get whatever three cents will bring, three cents per ounce will bring, you will not be able to provide sufficient revenue to fund all of the programs?
So what we're saying is that at $27 million below what we project the programs need-
No, I ask you, I ask you, it's very sufficient. Are you saying that anything short of three cents per ounce, which is the current proposal by the administration, will not sufficiently fund the programs?
Anything that generates less than $90 million would not sufficiently fund the programs?
Which is three cents per ounce.
So-
There's another one of those real simple questions, and I know you're very crafty. You're like, I've been around a long time, but that's a pretty, pretty, pretty clear question that usually requires a pretty clear answer.
So there is analysis done by council technical staff, which, will you agree, that shows that 2.5 would also generate sufficient revenue?
And so now you're gonna put it back on us?
No, you asked a question, I just gave the answer. I was just answering your question.
I gotta tell you. See, there, there's a reason why you've been here- See, there's a reason why you've been here through, what, four administrations?
This is the fourth.
You're, you're pretty good.
Thank you.
I've been here a little long too, though. I've been here, I've been here for a minute.
That was like getting a free pizza.
So, basically, your projections for the 89, is it 89 million?
Yeah.
It's three cents per ounce.
As I said, there was another analysis which would agree-
No, 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 I'm asking, it was very specific.
Yeah.
So, you're saying 2.5 will generate 89 million?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, okay, I just, alright, just wanted to get it clear, okay. So, anything below 2.5 will not-
We have to look at what we could, what we'd have to cut for-
Alright, which would be problematic. Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Dubois, just had a couple of questions on, on your concerns about the, the container tax. I'm not going to get into the money aspect, other people may, may raise that, obviously that's important, but I-
We think so.
I hit it from another, another angle. I know when you've talked about the sugar tax, you've talked about consumption level, I think you're projecting 55 percent drop-off, is that-
That's correct, at three cents, yes.
Is it fair to assume that, given that the container tax hits just about all beverages, that the consumption level would not fall off nearly that much? Because people have to drink something.
Right, so I think the analysis here assumes about a 30 percent reduction, so it does assume a much lower, lower falloff, which we call it was reasonable.
What, where would they fall off to, I guess is the question? If you're saying they fall, like with the soda, I think the assumption is folks will stop drinking soda, or at least buying it in Philadelphia.
Right. So, you could still, for example, buy fountain sodas. Those wouldn't be covered, from what I understand, by the bill. You could still decide to, you know, go outside the city to buy, so there are ways, there are other choices, there are just fewer other choices.
Do you, do you think it's likely or logical that for just 15 cents a container, that people will go outside the city?
So, what we saw, one of the things we saw was what happened in Baltimore, and there we saw that the increase from two to five cents resulted in a decrease in consumption. So, we think that yes, going to 15 cents would result in a decrease in consumption.
Now, you, I'm not gonna get, it seems like different people are defining regressive different ways, you know? I know you think this tax would be regressive for the reasons you say. I think there's some folks that think regressive because of it hits, the sugar tax would hit certain communities harder than others, you know? So, I guess we can debate what regressive means, but as far as fairest, you say we believe the sugar tax is the best and fairest vehicle. If the, if the container tax hits just about everybody instead of just certain portions of the community, as was shown in the, the chart the council president had, I guess a week or so ago, why is that, why is that on, or less fair? Why would the-
So, our concern here is what, right, is what you talked about, is that people have much fewer options to get around this tax? So, if you're talking about impact on low-income neighborhoods, they will have fewer choices for not paying this tax.
But, but everybody, the object is for all communities to take advantage of pre-K, community schools, rec centers, right? So, shouldn't, wouldn't an argument be that being fair is to make all those communities have to pay the tax that's funding those, those services?
So, both of these taxes would hit people in every area.
But the, the sugar, I think you, it's been stated that the soda tax would hit some communities harder.
Yeah, and what we said, though, is that there's a choice with the sugar, sugary drinks tax, that you can buy other products that are not sugar-sweetened. With this tax, you really wouldn't have that option unless you're buying milk products.
But wouldn't that make, getting back to get a more consistent assumption of money that's coming in every year? Because doesn't, I think historically, the last few years, soda has dropped off, intake has dropped off any, anyway, right? 30 percent? So, I guess what I'm saying is people are gonna keep drinking something. So, isn't there a more, to fund these good programs, we all agree are good, wouldn't this have a more consistent forecast of what money would come in? Because again, people are gonna keep-
I think that's-
Probably drink something.
Right, I think that's why the projected falloff at the start is much smaller with this tax, because we're assuming that fewer people would avoid it. So, that's already built into each projection.
Okay, okay. And, and I know you bring up the health, I'm sorry, this will be my last question, you bring up the, the health issue. I know before, we've heard from the administration that that wasn't their focus, their focus was bringing in the money. Now, I know we can debate what this brings in and all that, so in a sense, with all due respect, aren't you changing the goalpost a little bit by now talking health? I know a lot of people have talked health, but the administration, that was not, the mayor made it clear in the beginning, this was all about bringing in money.
It is definitely about bringing in money. Our point is that the container tax actually adds tax to drinks that are healthy, so that does change-
So, healthy, so you're saying health is a factor?
Health, it's, it's not why we were imposing the tax, but obviously we're concerned about the health of the Philadelphians.
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, let me thank my colleague, Bondell Reynolds Brown, for presenting options to discuss, deliberate on, I think this is the form for those kinds of discussions. So, I applaud her for taking the initiative to do that. I have some questions related to the difference between a soda tax being oppressive and a container tax not being oppressive. I, I get confused when, you know, a grocery tax on all items that are in plastic containers versus soda, and I don't know philosophically you have thought about this at all, but it just confuses me to see one in one light and another that is more wide-reaching in a different light. Do you have any?
Yeah, I think I'm, I agree with your underlying point that because container tax applies to more products and is harder to avoid, think of it as more regressive.
So, and I also thank her for having a briefing to discuss a lot of this, my staff attended, and they used the Baltimore model and the Berkeley model, I believe, and what did you, have you looked into Baltimore and Berkeley? So, in Baltimore, what was their net out of their tax?
So, Baltimore generated, I believe, about $11 million from the tax, they were at, at five cents. We've heard different reports about how much it cost them to implement, so-
What were those, what were those figures?
So, we've heard as much as 3 million, and then we've also heard that it didn't cost, it didn't cost nearly as much as that. But I think the 11 million is what we've heard consistently from, from how much they generated, and that'll, sorry, go ahead.
And under this proposal, it was brought up about health, I think Greenlee mentioned If, does Baltimore's model include water?
I believe it does. Yes, it does. It includes water, it actually also includes alcohol, so it's a different tax, I mean, it has a different base.
And that was a part of their net?
That was part of their, yes.
So, we're, we're not proposing alcohol?
We are not.
And we're not proposing water, I hope?
Yes, water would be taxed under the container bill.
So, I would be concerned about water being an essential part of anybody's diet under any circumstances, sugar, no sugar, water is a part of that. So, if that were exempted from it, because that would have to be a consideration for me, what, have you done numbers if you take water out?
Yeah, so, we think about 16 and a half million of the 61 roughly million comes from water, so then the net would go down to about 45.
So, another concern was looking at an option of how we collect and being more aggressive about our collection. Have we juxtaposed those numbers on top of what is being proposed?
Yeah, I don't think, between the two taxes, I don't think there's a substantial difference in what the cost would be. I'll ask the Revenue Commissioner to come up and talk about that, he would know more detail than I would.
While he's coming up, because I know that clock is gonna come out at some point. What would be the difference between the Berkeley, Philly model? Do they also do water in that, in Berkeley?
In their-
Container tax?
They don't, they don't have a container tax, they have a sugar-sweetened beverage tax, so it wouldn't include water.
Do they include water?
No.
Okay, so, if we are for health, we, you know, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, fresh fruit juices also are gonna be uncovered under that?
Correct.
And we want to encourage that, because here's my concern, one, revenue, where would the shortfall be made up at and if those projections come close to what would be needed based on the goals that we all agree on? And then number two, you know, I, I did a travel, my granddaughter made a special request of lunch from Papa, and I came across the East Falls Bridge coming down Ridge Avenue towards Allegheny. From Allegheny and Ridge all the way to her school, which is on Broad Street, I could not find a healthy lunch for her and beverage to go with. So, if we're talking about health, we cannot ignore there are some food deserts here that impacted one way or another, aren't very healthy right now. And so whatever solutions we come up with, need to address some of those options. So, back to the revenue side.
So, your question was about enforcement or?
My, my question was with enforcement, without water, net-net, what would we get?
Looking at the dollar amounts or?
Yes. Money, revenue, income.
Yeah, so we included 1.8 million dollars in the Revenue Department's budget for collections, so you can net that out of the 95 million we project for sugar-sweetened beverage. I think that for the container tax, the cost would probably be roughly the same, so you'd have, have 1.8 million off of the 61 million, you'd wind up around 59.
So, under your conservative estimate, if we did container, which excluded water, what would that net be?
So, if we, in, if we exclude water, that would take us down to about 45, if you take out the cost to the 1.8 million, you get down to about 43.2. But, that 1.8, we've kind of put in our budget and we weren't netting it out on the sugar-sweetened beverage either, so kind of apples to apples, the difference would be 95 versus 45.
My time has been concluded, but I will come around on the second round.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, administration.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, city solicitor, for your testimony and for affirming that we have legal standing should this measure indeed become law. To our Wizard of Numbers, Rob Dubois, Rob Dubois, let's cut that-
I thought you were talking about Budget Director.
What did you say?
I thought you were talking about the Budget Director when you said our Wizard of Numbers.
For clarity purposes, define for me regressive.
So, I, when you look at tax policy, regressive would be having a larger impact on lower-income taxpayers.
So, if I accept the definition as you just presented it, would you agree that research shows that consumption of sugary-sweetened beverages, based on research, is higher in lower-income communities?
I, that is what the research shows, it also shows that those communities are more targeted with advertising and that that, I think, is part of the reason the consumption is higher.
Accepting that as well, then you do believe, then do you believe then that the sugary-sweetened beverage rate, we won't use the four-letter word, tax, is indeed regressive?
I think-
Yes or no? Is it regressive?
So, I'd like to give a fuller answer than just yes or no, if that's okay. I think for people who continue to consume those beverages and pay it, yes, but I think people have a choice and will have a choice to consume something else.
Okay, for clarity purposes, define for me sustainable, sustainability.
For tax?
Yes.
Say it's kind of predictability over a long-term at relatively level amounts.
Do you accept the, what some might view as a hypothesis that soda consumption is on the decline?
Yes, soda consumption is on the de, on the decline, sugar-sweetened beverages as a whole are not declining as rapidly as, as soda is, and we've built in a decline each year in our projections.
Okay, alright then. In general, do you believe that broader taxes are preferable than narrow, very narrow taxes? In general?
In general, I, actually I don't have a real strong point of view on that either way. I really would look at, you know, what taxes are projected to generate.
Do you think there's value in casting a wider net so that there's what I call shared sacrifice than to have a measure that potentially narrowly hits one particular sector?
So, I think there's, while there's some merit to that, that argument, I also think that in this case, you're giving people more of a choice to avoid the tax with the sugar-sweetened beverage, which is narrower because it doesn't apply to as many products.
So, did I hear you say that you actually believe in shared sacrifice?
I do, and I think that you would have shared sacrifice with either one of these measures.
Okay. Do you believe that a non-reusable beverage container tax is broader than a sugar-sweetened beverage tax? Since you agree that shared sacrifice has value?
I think that the way that it's defined in this legislation, it applies to more products.
Okay, alright. When determining your internal revenue projections, what collection rate are you assuming for a non-reusable beverage container tax?
So, we actually were using the projections from council that assumed a 30 percent, 30 percent either fall off in consumption or non-compliance or avoidance, so it's kind of 30 percent general falloff from what you would project if you collected every dollar based on current consumption.
So, then help me understand, why do you believe that the administration will be able to collect this tax at 30 percent, which is perplexing for me? If you're confident you'll be able to collect the sugar-sweetened beverage tax at 90 percent?
So, we actually, the equivalent of the 30 percent falloff for sugar-sweetened beverage is actually 65 percent, because we have the 55 percent falloff in consumption plus 10 percent non-compliance, so that's the equivalent of the 30 percent.
Okay. That's it for me in terms of prepared questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You've been here for multi-administrations, can you recall a time when we have debated revenue that we need three years from the date it was proposed?
Yes, we've had discussions about, for example, the business taxes, where we legislated taxes far into the future. We had five-year plans in the past where we legislated the wage tax for five years, so yes, we've done this in the past.
For a new initiative?
For a new initiative, I don't remember this specific discussion.
So, I want to get to the point around regressive, because I think that both of these measures, container and, and the sugar beverage tax, is regressive. But I want to kind of highlight Councilman Jones' perspective around choice. You know, we keep talking about people having a choice, and as I visit Wawa, 7-Eleven, and the bodegas, 98 percent of what is in those stores would be taxed. And so when we talk about deserts and, and the options, there is a diet option, there is water, and then there is juice that is three times more expensive. So, I have a hard time in this debate, I've had such a hard time getting my hands around when we say that people have choice, because the fact of the matter is that we don't, folks in neighborhoods that I represent will not have that choice. will not have that choice. But let's talk about the water notation that you make. The Water Department asked for a water increase of how much?
It was a multi-year increase, and I'm not sure of the...
About 11%.
Over four years, I think?
Yes, two years. 11%. It was like a six and a half, five and a half, and a six and a half. And part of the justification they used was because people were drinking bottled water as opposed to tap water. That was part of their challenge for the rate increase, right?
I didn't see that, but I believe it.
Okay. So if we're going to tax water at 15%, do you think we would have an increase in our water consumption, our tap water consumption?
So I don't think we'd have a dramatic increase in our tap consumption, no.
So you don't think it would offset people going back to tap water as opposed to?
I don't think so.
Okay. As it relates to the income amount that we're debating, in terms of what the needs are, you know, one of the issues for us, or at least for me, is we're building out a plan, all plans that we agree. Why this stickler for needing the full amount upfront and not getting started so that we can justify more revenue later? To the voters.
To be clear, the 89 million is actually the fifth-year number. The first year is about half.
Forty-eight million. You told me 48.
Right, that's right. So it does ramp up a little bit over time. The 48 included more than just these three initiatives. It included the Energy Authority Initiative, and it included contributions to the pension fund. These numbers, the 89, no longer include the Energy Authority Initiative, so that's part of the reason for the difference. But it does ramp up over time.
I think for, again, and we've, one of the things that, particularly on the loan piece, is how long is it going to take us to build capacity to be actually able to expend on the capital side, this type of initiative?
On rebuild? So I can call someone from the Management Director's office to give more detail, but we have done a lot of the buildup work already. And that work will continue between now and when we would do the first bond issue, which would be in January. So I actually think by the time that we got to doing a bond issue, we would be ready to go.
So your assertion is that we do the bond measure in January, and by June 30th, we will have expended the first 100 million?
No, we don't actually assume that we'll do the next borrowing for two years. So we assume that we'd spend that 100 million dollars over two years.
It's 100 million plus what you're leveraging privately that we still don't know the amount.
Right, that's right. Yes, and we assume that that would be spent within two years.
Do we, do we have a better idea of how, what that amount is going to be since we've not been told? We've said, we've been told that there's money committed, we don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I don't think we can give a specific amount here today.
So you, so again, we're being asked to take a vote on something we all agree on, on something that's not finalized.
I think that you've probably, you've been briefed on rebuild, you know the details of that.
I have the details on the expenditures. I don't have the details on the income, other than trust me.
I don't think it's trust me, I think we've said that we've had discussions with outside sources, and that those discussions have made it clear that we are going to get a substantial amount of money. What we haven't said is that specific amount.
Will that be finalized before we're expected to take a vote?
I don't know, but we can, we'll get back to you on whether that will be finalized.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to verify that my numbers are accurate.
I'm sure they are.
I'm not so sure. I'm talking about the soda tax for a minute, just to make sure. And we talked about this in prior meetings, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. At a half a cent, my numbers say that we generate $31 million roughly. And at one cent, we generate 57 million. And at one and a half cents, we generate 76 million.
So I don't have the half cent, but for one cent, 57.8, for one and a half, 77 million.
Right. So, and this is a question I had asked several weeks ago. I'm not saying I'm in favor or against any tax, just in general, from the math standpoint. It seems to me that at one cent, you generate the most money, 57. Because at a half a cent, you generate 31, so the fall off is...
The most money per cent, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Your fall off's only $4 million. You go to the next half, and the fall off is more dramatic. But that, going from one and a half to two is not that much, and going from two to three is minimal. So I'm just trying to understand why we even look at that.
Because going from one and a half up to two and a half, it's another $20 million, which funds a lot of programs. So even though it's generating less per cent than the first cent, the revenue that it generates is important for the programs.
Right, so the one and a half to two and a half generates, I guess, about 19 million going the penny, but the first penny gets 57.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had the number.
Yeah, no, you have it right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, sir.
Question on the taxes, as far as the container tax at 15 cents. And I do appreciate too, Councilwoman Blondo Vazaplan, for putting out some options for us as council members, looking at opportunities to raise money for these great programs. Is, since it's on everything, so it's 15 cents, it would work the same way as a case of water. So it'll be 15 cents for each bottle on the case. Does that work the same way?
Right, yes, for each bottle.
Would that be considered one container, the whole case?
No, it would be for each bottle in the...
And how about, like, for juices and, like, do schools exempt from this as far as...
Yes, school districts exempt.
So when they buy the juices, that will not be included?
Correct.
All right, so now...
Point of interest, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, I would like to remind my colleagues that we do have the school district scheduled to offer brief testimony to fully address Councilman Squiller's question.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I think, because that's important too, especially for the children of the school district.
Right.
With those exemptions, then do the dollar amounts change? You said it went from 70 million to 40 million for without water?
From 61 to 45.
61 to 45?
Right.
So, and then if we were, and we couldn't, why can't we include the liquor into the container tax?
I think because it's overseen by the LCB, but there are two lawyers at the table, so I'm going to let them answer that.
Yeah, there's a real good case to be made that if liquor is preempted under, because the state regulates so heavily liquor, that if you impose an additional tax on liquor as opposed to other taxes that are imposed statewide, that there would be, that would be an issue.
Would that be challenged by the state?
No, we would just, we would advise that we don't, we don't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be comfortable with council's authority with respect to that.
Okay, and so the, could be a lot more containers if you include liquor.
Possibly.
So the revenue generated from this container tax, is that me? The revenue generated from the container tax at the 15 cents would be sufficient or not sufficient to run the programs?
It would not be sufficient. It is about $27 million short of funding for those three programs. So we'd have to pull back and figure out how to pull back on the programs.
Is it possible to use both taxes? And then, and the...
I think from a...
Container tax and the sugar tax?
I think there are...
I'm just asking questions.
Yeah. I think there would be administrative nightmares, and then from a policy perspective, we'd be taxing the same product two different ways.
The ones you're taxing, what's the container, the other one you're taxing what's in it.
Right.
So it's, right, so it's, I don't know, just asking questions out there. Since we have options, it's good to find out what total options would be affordable to us at, come time for a vote. When we, when we go through the process of collection, it's going to be collected the same way as both the beverage tax and the beverage tax?
Yes, I think they'd be pretty similar. I think there are more distributors who'd be subject to the container tax, so it'd be slightly wider network. But in terms of the cost of enforcement, it'd be pretty much the same.
I mean, we hear about the loss of jobs from the sugar tax, the possibility of loss of jobs from the sugar tax. Do we see, does Baltimore see any loss of bottlers or anything in that instance that we know of?
They did see a loss of bottlers. I think, is it two factories closed? I think, I think there were two factories that closed and said, poor other reason was this tax.
Well, factories that were in Baltimore, do you know?
I think they were in Baltimore.
And...
And this, I read this a long time ago, so, but I think that...
Right. So they, they just, they closed or they moved out of the, do you know?
I think they closed.
So do we see that as a negative effect? Were there taxes lost, jobs lost, obviously wage tax lost? Do we know how many people lost jobs over that?
I don't. I do not. We can get back to you with that number.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry, I was going to jump in, but it's not my turn yet. Chair recognizes Councilman Eden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the conversation here, which tax, the soda or sugar sweetened beverage and the container taxes, which one taxes more products in our grocery stores?
The container tax.
Are you analyzing, or have you fully analyzed, how many more products? Or will you be analyzing?
No, I mean, the big difference is water and fruit juices that are not taxed under the sugar sweetened beverage tax, and I guess diet sodas too, not taxed under the sugar sweetened beverage tax, and are taxed under the container tax.
Is it accurate that the container tax would be at the same rate for juice boxes that you might have for kids as a Big Gulp?
Yes. It would be the same for both.
For Big Gulps taxed?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, and just to clarify, I think the Big Gulps actually wouldn't be subject to the container tax because that's a fountain drink. And I think, I think it's just the sealed containers that would be, so actually someone getting a Big Gulp would not be paying any tax under the container tax.
So the juice boxes would be...
Juice boxes, you'd actually pay more, you'd actually pay more under the container tax bill than you would under...
I was just going to ask, my next question was, fountain drinks are exempt? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So would it be fair to say that the bodegas and the corner stores that don't tend to have soda fountains, would they be at a competitive disadvantage to larger chains like 7-Elevens or Wawa's or any other chain?
Go to Wawa where you can, you have fountain drinks, or McDonald's where you have fountain drinks, those wouldn't be taxable, whereas the containers at the bodegas would be.
So the bodegas, the corner stores, the commercial quarters would be, would have a, at least a disadvantage. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
If this tax comes in at revenues that you, that you project, and no other estimates that have been circulated, in the best-case scenario, what programs would you cut?
So I think if we, we'd probably have to look at doing it proportionately. So we would have fewer pre-K seats, probably fewer community schools, and less investment in our, in parks, recs, and libraries.
Speaking of parks and recreation, I have a question here on the... So say how much revenue is needed to generate in order for the fund, in order to fund the bonds that will be taken out for the mayor's initiatives?
So for the, one second, I have that. So for the rebuild bonds over the life of our five-year plan, it'd cost about $56 million.
That's all our parks, recreations, and libraries?
Yes.
All right, and what is the impact on our bond rating if the city does not generate the revenue proposed through the container tax or the SSB?
So if we did not get either one of those taxes, we would not issue the bond?
If we, if we didn't generate the proposed revenue?
Are you saying if we implemented the tax and it came in lower than we, so if it was lower, but not a lot lower, it wouldn't really have that big an impact on our bond rating? And it would depend really on what was happening with other revenues also. But if it's just the projections being slightly off, I don't think that would have a major impact.
So what are the consequences if we're overly optimistic on projections?
So the worst consequence is that we wind up, you know, running deficits. And that's not just a consequence for kind of what, how rating agents look at it, but for how we operate the government.
Anyway, Councilwoman Jones was talking a lot about health benefits. Are there any health benefits to a container tax?
So we don't think so. And in fact, it would, in some ways, steer people away from water and fruit juices, which are healthy.
Because of water and fruit juices, it will not, will be taxed. Is it accurate to say that we're taxing some necessities of these healthy products that we wanted people to drink under the container tax?
Yeah, we believe that, and we believe that they have fewer choices to move to other products with the container tax.
So we're talking about water, health supplements, like pediatric nutritional drinks, would they all be included?
In this, I think that there's an exemption, well, water would be taxed, milk products would be exempt. So if it's a product that has milk in it, would not be taxed. But that's, alcohol and milk are the things that are exempt, everything else would be taxed.
But health supplements?
Health supplements are not excluded.
They're not excluded, so they would be taxed. Pediatric nutritional drinks, they would be taxed? Are they, are they taxed under the sugar sweetened beverages?
They, we plan to offer amendments to make it clear that they'd be exempt.
So you would...
We would exempt them, yes.
You're going to exempt them, okay, thank you. I have no further questions at this round.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I have a couple of questions here, just want to make sure that we get the facts out and that we clarify things that may be a little bit, a little bit misconstrued. Because what we cannot afford to do is have any level of buyer's remorse. So after we vote for whatever it is that we want to vote for, whether it's soda tax or container tax or whatever it may be, that we get it right, we have to get it right. And, you know, I think that there's a good deal of information out there that's not completely accurate, and wanted to just clarify, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but that, I think that there's a common assumption that universal pre-K means that every child in the city of Philadelphia is going to have access to high-quality childcare under whatever plan is floated.
So our projection is that under our plan, there would be 10,000 more spots available?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't get you to, Universal was in three years, but we also think that after three years, we'll kind of reexamine the, the plan was always to reexamine the program, see whether it's working, see whether to expand it further.
Is it, is it 10,000 or is it 6,500, the last thing I heard?
6,500 funded by the city, which we think will be matched by another 3,500 by the state to get us to 10,000.
And of those 10,000 spots, what's the universe? What's the, the range of young people, three- and four-year-olds, who would be able to have the benefit versus... people, three and four-year-olds, who would be able to have the benefit versus that, which is, you know, in the universe here in Philadelphia, that would need that level of childcare?
So, I'm gonna ask other people to answer that question.
Okay.
Otis Hackney and Jim Angler.
Good afternoon. Can you repeat your question, please?
Certainly. Can you give us some idea of what the universe of three and four-year-olds are here in Philadelphia that would require, well, they all require a universal pre-K? But, but what's the range? Because I've heard numbers anywhere from 1,400, which the school district says is the current waitlist for universal, for, for pre-K in the school districts' numbers, versus, I think it was up to 27,000, was it, from the, from the administration?
And good afternoon, I'm Otis Hackney, Chief Education Officer for the mayor's office. The number is about 17,000 children-
17,000.
-that are not in quality pre-K programs across the city at this time.
Okay, so, but we would be making available about 10,000?
That fall under 300% poverty.
Say again?
That fall under 300% poverty.
Okay. And what's the number that don't fall under the 300%? Because there will be, as I understand, an allotment available for those who are above 300%?
Well, in terms of the, the world of, it's about another 10,000 that wouldn't, that would be above that range.
Okay. So, I'm just throwing a number out there. Let's say for, you know, a family of four, if the number is, I don't know, $30,000, that will be required to qualify for universal pre-K under the administration's plan. If you're at 30,000, you know, $31,000, you would not qualify, and therefore, you would fit into that 10,000, the, the additional 10,000 numbers that you just referred to.
When, when you, I'm sorry, repeat the, are you talking about in terms of salary or just overall numbers?
The overall number.
So, your question, repeat your question, please?
So, there are 10,000 slots that are available for pre-K, and that's based on being 300% or below one of the, is that correct? No?
No, go ahead, finish your question, and then I'll, I'll fix, I think, or correct whatever you're, you're asking.
Okay. So, there are, so it's 300% or below that would qualify for universal pre-K in the 10,000 spots that are available. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
So, what, in terms of, there are 17,000 three and four-year-olds that are not in quality pre-K centers across the city.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking to decrease that number of children that are not in quali, and increase the number from that 17,000.
Okay.
So, in terms of the total need, so, the total need of children that need to be in pre-K is about 27, so I think that's where you're getting that 27?
Right, okay. So, the total universe is 27,000, and then there's 17,000 that would qualify?
Correct.
Okay.
Or my, that's correct. Or do-
Yes, no, maybe?
I'm sorry, Jim Angler, Deputy Mayor for Policy and Legislation. So, if there were to be an income cap at 300% of poverty, there's about 17,000 kids that fall underneath that 300%. What the administration has proposed is a program that gets towards universal access, that is accessible to everyone regardless of income, most specifically because of those families that might fall just outside of the income guidelines. So, quality childcare for a parent, child age three or four, is about $272 per week. So, for a single mother who has two kids in quality childcare, if she's making over $1,175 per week before taxes, she would not be eligible for any subsidy under a program that required a 300% of poverty income cap.
Okay. But, but the income cap does not apply?
The program that the administration has talked about does not include an income cap at this time.
It does not include an income cap. Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I think a lot of people are under certain assumptions, that every child in the city of Philadelphia is going to be able to get universal pre-K, and that's not accurate. And every child is, you know, going to qualify for one of these high-quality spots. Can you also give me some sort of an idea of what the rollout is going to be of those 10,000 slots?
Well, the initial rollout's gonna be 2,000 seats next year, starting in January, and then we would add an additional 2,250 seats per year to get up to the 6,500 city-funded slots.
So, as a district council member, if I think of 2,000 seats next year, I'm thinking, okay, so if you divide it by the 10 districts, there's 200 seats per district approximately. So, can you give us some sort of an idea of how, how that will work? Is that the way it's gonna work?
Well, we would, we would have a very targeted rollout, and in terms of how we would identify certain areas of the city, based on some risk factors, to get the children in those communities to be in the quality pre-K programs.
Okay. So, I'll come back around on my next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Hi, good afternoon. So, I am interested in questions about the soda tax in particular, and, and its impact on pre-K. So, I am, like many of my colleagues here, fully in support of universal pre-K. I think we're working towards that as a city. I see that as not only an enormous anti-poverty measure, it's an education measure. It also puts women back to work, and that's one of the biggest factors in allowing our families, and especially our single female heads of household, to come back to work and begin earning income. So, I'm very interested in the impact on pre-K. So, my colleague had talked about the differential between 1 and 1/2 to 2 and 1/2 cents, and you said that that differential was about $20 million. Is that right?
That's right.
And I generally don't tend to look at things just in a, you know, percent measure, because I'm sure that economically, that's a difference. But, $20 million, so how much is the administration planning to spend on each pre-K student?
$8,500.
So, at $8,500 and $20 million gap, we're talking about a differential of almost 23, 2,300, 2,350 students?
Yeah. If we took all of, right, if we took all of the cut out of pre-K, you'd be down to about 4,100 seats.
So, losing $20 million out of the budget would mean, if we were looking at it from a pre-K perspective, that we could not educate 2,352 students that we had hoped to bring into, into a quality pre-K program?
That's correct.
And that total, in the first three years, the total number of pre-K students that we're hoping to bring into the program is 6,000, 6,500?
City-funded spots over the three years, yes.
Correct, 6,500. So, that 2,352 students not being impacted out of 6,500 means that we're not fulfilling our mission by, over a third. And so, I guess one of the questions that I would want to be asking is, the, the question about moving around as we go incrementally through the different options, if we're talking about pre-K, is there a reason not to, this tax, obviously, is difficult for everybody to, any kind of movement towards taxation needs to be thought out very carefully and thoughtfully. But if we're going to move towards that, are we not trying to move towards the maximum that we can do, as opposed to, you know, compromising for incremental amounts that have max, that have significant impact on our ability to actually do the job?
Yes, we believe that we should tax it an amount that gets us up to the amount we need to implement these programs, yes.
So, that you don't actually look at incremental gains in, in the tax as just being about incremental gains in revenue. We should also think about it in terms of how many students and young people, three-year-olds and four-year-olds in the city that, that would not be able to access a, a quality city-funded seat in universal pre-K?
That's a very good way to look at it.
The second question I had was a little bit about my colleague's bill, and I want to thank Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, like everybody else, because it is important to have other options on the table. In terms of this question of, you know, whether a tax is regressive or not, in your opinion, are flat taxes considered regressive?
Yes.
Okay. So, a flat tax is a tax that applies to, across the board, to all incomes unavoidable?
Yes.
And on a broad level? And I think that-
And then tends to have a larger impact on people at lower levels, so higher percent of their-
And they're unavoidable as a result?
Correct.
And they will overwhelmingly impact families who can't avoid the tax?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, the, the other question I had is, has, has the, I know that the school district has testified about that it doesn't appear to be impacted by, by a container tax on its particular products. Have you discussed whether parks and recs and the programming done through parks and rec, which I believe includes beverages, water, and juice, are impacted at all?
I think they would be. I don't think they're excluded from the bill, so I think they would be impacted.
And have you calculated out how much that impact would have on the city?
We have not.
Okay. Is that something that you could provide?
Yes, we can provide, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon to each of you.
Good afternoon.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, thank you very much for just adding value to the discussion. Options are always welcome and valued. Let me just go back to the line of questioning that was started by Councilman Squiller earlier, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown mentioned that the school district would be offering its own testimony relevant to how this would impact them, although it was answered that the school district of Philadelphia would be considered exempt, and/or, as the language in the bill states, they would not be considered a dealer. However, do we know whether or not parochial schools, private schools, and any of the private daycare centers, would they be considered as, as dealers as it is described in the bill?
So, I don't see an exemption in the legislation for other schools.
Okay. So, just the listing of the school district of Philadelphia?
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, let me ask you, because I've heard this quite often, and, you know, I thought, Council President, after we dealt with that sort of elasticity of demand, when we worked on that $2 per pack cigarette tax to get that enabling authority, I thought that was the last time I was gonna have to deal with the elasticity of demand argument regarding the selling of anything.
Aren't you happy it's back?
Especially, especially since Sheltonham Avenue is, is a part of the district, and Councilman Curtis Jones has, has City Avenue, and our people can, you know, easily, you know, cross the street. With that being said, has the administration reviewed, or, or do you have any numbers reflective of, of how the elasticity of demand would be measured with the soda tax versus the container tax?
Sure. So, for the sugary drinks tax at 3 cents, we built in 55% reduction in consumption, and then an additional 10% in tax avoidance. So, a total reduction of 65%. For the container tax, which is at a lower level, the assumed falloff in the analysis is about 30%, so it's a much smaller falloff, which makes sense.
Mm-hmm, smaller falloff. In addition to that, one of the things we have heard quite often in this debate, and I will definitely be, be addressing the issue, I know, a little more in detail later, is this impact on small neighborhood-based businesses, particularly our corner stores, all of those neighborhood-based businesses. And we value, you know, the tax in those businesses, from sales to U and O, they are extremely valuable. However, a question that has come up, when we talked about the high level of consumption, where we see a, a large number of neighborhood-based corner stores, I'm talking about those areas that are deserts, have, has the administration conducted any analysis about ownership? And let me just be more specific in my, in my question. Have we conducted an analysis of whether or not the owners of the small neighborhood corner stores in our city, do we have a number, a number relative to how many of them live in the city of Philadelphia?
Do not know that.
We do not know?
No.
Okay, now, and the reason why I asked that question is because after concluding about eight budget briefing and town hall meetings throughout the ninth district, and we talked about, talked about the tax that was proposed and everything that was sort of on the table, one of the questions was the issue that we had been talking about as it related to city business and construction, about minority inclusion and, and ownership. And I will tell you that it was a little interesting to hear questions coming from my constituency about how many of those neighborhood-based corner stores were actually owned by people who lived in the communities in which they served. So, has the administration conducted any sort of analysis from that perspective?
We don't. We, we don't have information on the residency of owners of businesses.
Okay, well, let, let me just state for the record that if, if, by any chance there's any way that you, and we will, you know, be in contact with our chambers to see whether or not they have any data, that can be helpful. But when we talk about the issue of consumption, I would hope that we would find a way to add into this discussion the issue of ownership, because what we're seeing in many communities is that while we have high levels of consumption, there are very low levels of, of ownership there. So, I think that's something that I would like to see. And there are some instances where there will be some owners who actually live in the community. I don't want anyone to think that I'm talking about in absolute terms. But just in sort of an informal survey of, of the district that I serve along with some others in the area, there was not a, a great sampling of, particularly on neighborhood commercial quarters and on neighborhood corner stores, that it was a high level of ownership amongst those that actually lived in the communities that were being served. So, I ask that that be sort of added to the discussion.
And I think the way we'd probably have to do that is some kind of survey, which, you know, may, may take a little bit of time, but we could do that to, to understand that better.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think I'll come back to second round.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Councilman O?
Thank you, Council President.
Welcome.
Earlier, we had a discussion about the fact that the, that the cost of universal pre-K is being proposed at 8,500 per, per person, per child, and that the, the costs average 14,000, but that since this program was not gonna run a full year, and would have shorter hours, that the 8,500 per child would be adequate funding. Do you recall that, or was I talking to somebody else?
And again, Mr. Angler?
Mr. Hackney can come up. I, I think it's that actually the 8,500 would be matched with other funding streams to get you up to the 14,000 per seat.
Okay, he doesn't have to come up, because you just told me that 8,500 would need to be matched by other funding streams to get to 14,000.
Yes.
Okay. So, but you're, the proposed tax that you have gets you to 8,500, not more than that?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're not in favor of a container tax, and I'm not saying that I am, I'm just saying that, what is the difference in your testimony between a, a tax that gets the money that you need and a tax that many, that gets the money that, what's the difference? Why do you, why is it that you don't want to do the container tax? I understand what you said about health, but health cannot really be at the base of this discussion, can it?
So, the primary reason is $27 million. It generates $27 million less. We also think that it's because that it's not avoidable, that it's more regressive than, than the sugar sweetened beverage tax. So, those are the two reasons that are in the testimony.
Okay. So, the regressiveness of the tax and the health outcomes are a part of the reason why you are proposing a sugary drink tax?
No, we're proposing a sugary drink tax to generate money for these initiatives. That's why we're proposing that tax. And the reason that we favor that over the 15 cents a container tax, or it generates more money, I mean, that's, that's the first reason we give in the testimony.
Okay. If you start, if you were to get your sugary drink tax and you started this program, can you sustain it?
Yes.
For how long?
We think we can continue it indefinitely.
Indefinitely, okay. So- So, the, the school district will need $600 million in 2021, and that will, let's assume for discussion's sake, say, be, being in the earlier portion of the mayor's second term. He's got eight years, no more than eight years. So, in 2021, the school district needs 600-some million dollars, which I am thinking that perhaps by that time, I hope we get control of the school district back, but if we do, we're not going to get as much of a input of revenues from the state. If we don't get it back, I'm not sure we're getting any more money from the state anyway, but we, but they need $600 million. Where will you get that money if you are being asked to provide a large portion of that money?
So, that money is a cumulative amount and assumes that nothing happens to address the issue between now and then?
Right.
And it assumes that the state doesn't step up to do its part? I think it's too early to draw that conclusion and to speculate on what would have to happen.
Right, but we know two things are gonna happen, definitely. The cigarette tax sunsets, and we know that the PICA wage tax sunsets in 2023, and according to your testimony numerous times, you said that puts a hole in the city's budget of $350 million per year from that point forward, unless there is another tax of some sorts to fill that hole.
Or unless the PICA tax is reauthorized, or we increase it locally. We have options on the wage tax amount, and the school, there's six projections already assume that the cigarette tax expires. That's part of that projection of 600 million.
So, does any of these numbers concern you? I mean, it concerns me in the sense that the Kenny administration will be done in 2023, and therefore, a new mayor comes in and inherits all these problems. Are there problems that you are leaving, or are you taking care of this? Is this all sustainable?
I think I've testified many times that we plan to take, that we plan to address that PICA tax issue well before 2023. And the cigarette tax issue is actually 2019, so that's during the mayor's term.
So, with, so with whatever universal pre-K is gonna turn out to be, which is not truly universal, we have neighborhoods that have good neighborhood schools, and we have neighborhoods that have poorly performing neighborhood schools. How is it that you're going to put five-star pre-K in every neighborhood, good and bad, according to your plan?
So, for that, I'll ask Mr. Angler and Mr. Hackney to come up.
So, a major component of our plan is building the capacity of providers across the city, and so we want to make sure that as we expand the number of seats available to children, we want to also move the, increase the capacity of the providers along with that.
Okay, so could I, can I just say that I would like to see some hard, you know, reports or, because, you know, the thing that occurs to me is it's like saying, we want every restaurant to be a five-star restaurant, and not every restaurant wants to be a five-star restaurant. It requires an investment of capital on their part, it requires an analysis on their part, and so if you're going into good neighborhoods, I am sure that they generally are gonna cater to more wealthy people who have higher, you know, kind of options and, but when you're, but this is really universal K is addressing poor neighborhoods, and you're going into neighborhoods and saying, you shall be a five-star provider, which means they have to pick up costs, increase salaries, and a whole lot of other things. So, my question about the $8,500 per student is, there would be an additional level of cost if you want a, because I've spoken to pre-K providers who say, we're happy where we are. We make more money where we are than if we were to take on these additional costs. Are you gonna compensate them or provide the cost that they need to be pre-K? And if you're not, is there an opportunity for the school district to pick that up, or is that just not part of the plan?
So, in terms of the rate at which students would be compensated for the $8,500 for the school day, school year, that's what that amount would cover. So, that's, that's the rate that we, in terms of the cost of quality that we have projected in our plan as we built it out.
Okay, I'm sorry to stop, but the bell's rung, and so I'll come back in the next round. Thank you.
Oh, thank Councilman, I didn't hear the bell.
Oh, I could've just kept going.
No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Councilman. Actually, maybe you guys want to stay up. So, I know this is, so, all right, I'm trying not to get myself in trouble. So, you know, I've been here for a lot of years and through a lot of budget seasons, and normally, it's like the people in the audience against us, or maybe against the mayor, but I gotta tell you, this has been like one of the most divisive proposals since I've been here. And I'm being very frank, candid, and I'm not gonna get in trouble. But I see this division along class lines, along all sorts of different lines, young versus old, manufacturing jobs versus service and white-collar jobs, and it troubles me because, you know, actually, for every child that gets pre-Ked, it's, parents may make $150,000, the child whose mom makes $10,000 doesn't get one, because we're making choice, because this is unlimited. And it troubles me that whenever there's a serious conversation about funding this, because I believe everybody should have everything, right? I mean, that's normally what we promise as politicians when we're out campaigning, and then reality sets in, you gotta make decisions. But every time, there seems to be a conversation about a broad-based revenue source, it seems to get rebuffed, every imaginable reason why you can't do it. I mean, the notion that you're sitting here talking about a container tax, you can't do it because there's not gonna be enough revenue, and I think everybody in this room on this side of the rail knows this is not gonna be a three-cent, an ounce tax, unless something's going on that I don't know about. So, the notion that you're gonna raise the revenue to do all of the programs, it's probably not realistic. But when there's a conversation about doing something, and I don't know where I am, I told, I talked to the mayor directly, because I think that's the way it should be, I have those conversations, I want to help the mayor, I want to help the administration, and more importantly, I want to help the citizens in the city of Philadelphia. But when I'm hearing that this is gonna be universal pre-K, which I guess we all support, although I'm telling you, and I'm too old for this now, but if I had a kid in pre-K, I don't think that the taxpayers should have to pay for that. I should be able to pay for that. But the conversation about it not being, and I'm not trying, you know, and I'm not trying to do it for applause or anything, you know, every now and then, I just, you know, I'm supposed to be, you know, conducting the hearings and just kind of not give my opinion, but, you know. So, I guess I'm saying that the notion that it can't be some sort of a universal or broader based funding source for this, this is beyond my comprehension, when everybody in the city, I'm sure when we're looking at rec centers, and I've heard from some members, they might be rec centers that are gonna be proposed, that are gonna be in areas where there's projected growth as a result of quote-unquote gentrification, and that's okay, because you gotta provide support for everybody. So, I don't know why, and I'm not saying I'm vote for the container tax, I think is a laudable idea, if there's a conversation about a broader-based tax that everybody should pay, you know, this notion that, well, you know, only the poor people should pay, because you all know, you saw the map up there where all of these stores are that are selling this product, it's gonna be in low-income neighborhoods. This is a fact, right? So, I think that, you know, people should take a little more serious the notion of having a broad-based tax, and maybe not this year, but maybe in future years, as we try to get to 10,000, if you're saying that's the number, because I thought it was 65, but whatever it is, that we can't keep going to a source that is gonna diminish, not necessarily because of the consumption, but just generally, the industry in terms of soda consumption is going down, and the revenues associated with that are gonna go down. So, we got like a week, two weeks to finish this up, and we're gonna probably do something, I would hope. I would ask the administration to take a little more seriously about a broader-based revenue stream and a more fair and equitable revenue stream, to just simply, as my good friend Harold Jackson from the Philadelphia Inquirer editorial board, who never agrees with me, said on Inside Story, that this was the least path of resistance for people. I really would like us to, as we move through this process, and as I say, not just today and not just this budget, but in a longer-term conversation, let's really like talk about broadening the responsibility for making sure that our kids, who are the most important aspect of what we do in our neighborhoods and our city, we take it a little more seriously than coming up with some of the stuff that I've heard, and with respect to the container tax, why it won't generate revenue? It'll generate the revenue, it's just a matter of the rate, if you want it, you know, and if it does generate the revenue, we pass it. You know, is the administration not gonna do the program, because it wasn't a sugary tax? I would think not, I would hope not. So, that's over the next week and a half, and this is more of an internal game plan. Can we like have like a little, you know, we'll sit down and kind of like talk about, you know, not only short-term, a little longer-term strategy for doing the things we need to do in the city, that has some shared responsibility and not just simply targeting one particular category of individuals, all right? So, I know that wasn't a question, but I'm just had to put it out there, you know, because I'm serious about this, I'm like really concerned about some of the stuff that I've seen going on in our city about this particular issue. Yes, Ms. Dangler?
Yeah, we're happy to continue the discussions. Obviously, we meet with your staff on a regular basis.
I'm sorry, could you bring that little?
I'm sorry, yeah. We meet with your staff on a regular basis, we're happy to continue those meetings and to talk about a way that's gonna fund the programs, obviously, the administration's before that.
Yeah, but we've been meeting, and every time somebody, something gets posed to you all, you're like, hey, okay.
And I think we've reviewed them, and we're happy to continue those discussions in a real full way.
Yeah, but I know, and continue the discussions, because we've been talking about this for two months, you know, and I've said stuff, and, you know, we had two months of hearing, and one of my people said, well, they don't know, Councilman, the press doesn't know, I'm sorry to bring you guys into it, press doesn't know what you guys are talking about. I said, well, we're having two months of hearing, right? I mean, so I'm saying, you can talk, but then you can talk. So, all I'm saying is like, you know, seriously, folks, I hate to bring this public, well, you know, we gotta really start talking about some kind of broader-based strategy and to just simply going after taxing poor people, you know, when the testimony is inconsistent with the reality of saying, one hand, you say you want to deal with health, and then I look at the health budget, we got an increase of a million dollars in the health department's budget, and none of it is going towards obesity, all right? It's going towards raises and family center, you know, so, that's, you know, that's all I'm saying, and I'm gonna stop, get off my little soapbox, and I'm gonna call in the next member. All right, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I still have not heard the difference in why a soda tax is a grocery tax and a container tax is not. I'm just confused. I disagree that, you know, and I can pay for my granddaughter's pre-K, but if I couldn't, that she doesn't deserve an equal footing and an opportunity for a life, and that I think somehow government is responsible for public education. And every study shows, everyone, that if a kid can't read up by the time they are in fourth grade, that they are, their outcomes are determined in a negative way, usually resulting in a place that I visited today, which is prison. So, I disagree totally that it is not a government issue, because we will either pay now, or we will pay later. So, I'd rather pay now and get positive outcomes than pay later and see a kid that says, the best school I ever went to was a jail school. I don't get that. So, I, on the issue, I need to know how, if we can't, can we do both taxes or not? What would happen? Isn't that a double tax, if you would, on the same product?
I don't know. Yeah, we can, we can look into it. So, this is the first I've heard of it.
So, sometimes compromise is difficult because of the regulations and laws that we have. We either, you know, you stand on one side of the street, you're okay. You stand on the other side of the street, you're okay. You stand in the middle of the street, you get run over. So, we need to figure this out. I agree with my colleague, that we all agree that these are important issues, but we gotta get, as, I think it was Sanchez that said it, we gotta get this right. We talked about consumption and sustainability on a cigarettes tax, and I get the cigarette runs that were supposed to happen and probably do, but nobody can argue the benefit of 88 extra million dollars in a school district, even though two years from now, you're right, we're gonna be dealing with a problem, but ever since I came here, we've been dealing with public education, not in a planned way, not in a well-thought-out way, but in a response to crisis, like they're getting ready to cancel kindergarten. So, I think it is incumbent upon us to do two things. Recognize that there are intended and unintended consequences of not doing pre-K, and they are, they are serious. The second thing is that it is our responsibility to look into that, and, yeah, you know, those who can afford pre-K, but there's a lot of Philadelphians that cannot, and they deserve good outcomes for their children, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
See, now, that's what I'm saying, is the vision. So, when Councilman Jones spoke, that side of the room clapped, when I spoke that side of the room. We gotta stop all this, right? I'm serious, brother, we gotta stop, we gotta figure out a way to get this right. See what I'm saying? Chair recognizes, folks, please, please. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez.
I guess in the spirit of what you said, Council President, I will withhold this, because I do think the week and a half will give folks an opportunity for pause, but, you know, I think it's important to, to remember that the pre-K commission was started out of a council initiative. It was a commission that came out of here that then the people voted for, and so the division doesn't exist on the goal. The division exists around how we get there. And quite frankly, I'd be ready to vote for a 3% real estate tax and do this right, the same way we do education, you know? And I believe that it should be sustainable, and if we want to do it, we want to do it in a way that's thoughtful, and that at the same time, we are taking into consideration what Councilman O says, that we are gonna hit a cliff, and we're gonna have to be here and make those tough choices. But the rhetoric around this, around people having choices, is one that, as a person of color in this, in this city, I've been extremely offended, because my folks don't have choices. You know, they don't, when you look at that, that person that goes and buys a 128-ounce of Hawaiian Punch, you know, under this sugary drink, that's a $3.84 tax. Under the container, it's 15 cents. When you look at that 64-ounce iced tea that that mother buys for the week, you know, under the sugar tax, it's $1.92, under the container tax, it's 15 cents. Now, I don't like either one of these, but I am concerned about the rhetoric and using the kids' shield around bad policy. We're making bad choices here. And I support, and I think these things are too important, and they're things that this council has talked about too long for us not to take this serious. So, you know, Council President, I'm gonna, you know, take your advice and use the next week and a half so that we can have a more thoughtful resolution to the conversation. But I don't like a conversation where it's them against us, because that's not the case, that it is rich people versus poor, or brown and black people versus folks who have choices. I think this discussion is too, too important to be narrowed that way, and I don't like to be told as an independent elected official that I only have one option. I've never taken on a budget discussion with one option, and that's the kind of rhetoric that really gets people against the wall and doesn't allow for the open, respectful conversation that we've always had in this council chamber. So, I'll take my week and a half recess.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to clarify, and my colleague had some comments about the analysis. I'm in favor of all the initiatives, I'm just not clear how to, how we're going to fund them, okay? And I want to just give you my observations, because I'm probably the least political person here, because I come from the business community. In the four or five months I've been here, in business, when you need money, the first thing you do is you make yourself more efficient, you try to buy products cheaper, you try to figure out how to make efficiencies within labor cheaper, you put systems in place that save you money, and the last thing you do is you raise prices. It seems to me, in government, the first thing we do is raise prices, instead of doing the efficiencies. Now, I know we are working together to do more efficiencies, and I'm not blaming this administration or this mayor, because I think they're doing a good job, but I think some of these things are holdovers from prior situations that should have been addressed. One is OPA, that still has the same value as three years ago, 134, and we're addressing it now. And the other question I have, and maybe you can answer this for me, because I'm just curious, I've sat through every budget hearing, there's 1,300 positions, I added them all up, that aren't filled. I don't think we're going to fill 1,300, but I don't think we'll fill 200. If we could assume we're going to fill half of those positions, 650, because the 1,300 positions in our budget are $64 million a year, and with benefits, 48 million. So, we're talking over $120 million on those two, on that piece. Our benefits, by the way, are 76% of salaries. In private industry, it's 32%. It's amazing, the benefits, working in the government. Is there a way to cut that in half and say, we'll fill half the positions, and is there a way to put that money, not to this initiative, but to the pensions? That's my concern.
So, there are a lot of things in there, I'd want to kind of go back to the beginning. So, we did, in putting our budget together, the first things we looked at were, can we do a better job of collections? And we have over our plan, $70 million in additional collections. Can we reduce things like unnecessary overtime? So, we have overtime reductions. So, we looked throughout the government for efficiencies, that is kind of the first thing that we do. I just want to make that point. On the vacant positions, the budget actually doesn't assume that they'll all be filled. We have what's called a vacancy allowance in each department, so we've already assumed a significant amount of savings from those. In addition, from the list, some of those weren't in our general fund, so there were aviation fund and water fund positions that don't accrue, but we're happy to go through that list with you and show you kind of what's in the budget and what's not for them.
Just seemed like a lot of money that was being allocated to positions that aren't going to get filled, even if it's half the amount, even half the amount's close to over $60 million.
And I just want to add to that, sometimes it's related to the timing of when that class, so for example, if you have a large police class or a large fire class that come in in the fourth quarter of the year, we include their positions, because they will eventually get filled, but then three quarters of the year, they won't get paid, and so we use that in a vacancy allowance. And so, there's often timing by each budget, and so there's a bit of a, there's a bit of an art and a bit of a science that goes into it, based on what we think will get filled, and then we try and have that vacancy allowance reflect what we think is the reality. And so, if there are challenges filling certain positions, then we may have a larger vacancy allowance, or if there's a large class that we assume that comes in much later, and so we plan for that within the budget. We try not to allocate any additional funds that we don't think actually will, will get filled, but then at the same time, we want to, some of those positions are really critical, and we want to fill them, and, and we're working through different processes to make sure they get filled, because they really help the operations of the departments.
Okay. I mean, I still think when you're dealing with a $4 billion budget, saving 2% or 3% is not difficult to do.
Our, our big challenge is the large amount of fixed costs, and I think if we, once you start removing the big fixed costs, which are things like the pension costs and our other kind of big fixed costs, when you start whittling it down, we actually have very limited flexibility despite the large size of our budget, and I think, I think that's where we can have many more conversations about this, we kind of give this presentation on a regular basis, but once you start whittling down those big fixed costs that we don't have any control over, the amount of flexibility that we have as an administration and council is, is relatively small, despite the large size of the budget.
But we have the court system president here, who's testified that their fees haven't been raised since 1984.
Yeah, and some of those fees, and we're actually going to be, we're doing a lot of analysis on those fees themselves, some of those fees, there's only a portion of those fees that flow into there and remain in the general fund, some of those fees flow directly to the court system. So, we want to work with, with you and with the courts to understand those fees. We also have to make sure that for every fee, that there's a real cost structure that we can align those fees to, so we need to do quite a lot of analysis to make sure, but that's definitely on our radar. We have about three or four departments that we want to work with on reviewing their fees, Ellen I, the sheriff's office, the courts, just to make sure, and we hopefully will introduce something in the fall to look at those fees, and we'll work with you on that.
Just to be clear, we wrote a check for $56 billion out of our fund to the court system, and if you had raised the fees per inflation from 1984, it'd be an extra $48 million, just on an inflation basis. Okay, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Rob DeBeau, I join you in appreciating the laser beam focus that Councilman Don brings to the numbers and his analysis of numbers. I want to revisit your response to his questions regarding the yield of potential soda tax rates at 1 cent. So, what was the yield you believe would, we would get with a 1 cent per ounce?
Roughly $58 million when you annualize it. So, it would be in the first full year, which is FY '18, it'd be about 58 million.
Okay. And 1 and 1/2 cent, the yield you anticipate?
77 million.
And on 2 cents?
2 cents is roughly 90, 89.8.
Okay. And so then, with the conservative, and I underscore that, the conservative estimate of a 15 cent flat rate in our projections yield for us $64 million. Is it fair to say then that our 15 cents flat rate yielding $64 million would get us where we need to be if the administration came in at 1 cent?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's not where the, it's not equivalent to the cost of the programs, but in terms of revenue generated, it's a little bit more than 1 cent.
Looking strictly at numbers, putting the programs that we all agree are essential, and also acknowledging the fact that there's no appetite for 3 cents. The question again is, with the conservative estimate of a 15 cent flat rate yielding $64 million, does that not get us where we need to be compared to the mayor's 1 cent?
Well, just to be clear, the mayor hasn't proposed 1 cent, but
Perspective potential.
Compared to 1 cent, yes, it's about the same, but that, neither one of those would fund the programs at the level we want.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, one, acknowledge that I agree with all of my colleagues, and that we will ultimately, you know, reach the much needed compromise. It's just great to, to hear everyone echo the sentiments about the ultimate goals and objectives, and right, the sausage gets made, and that depends on how we, we get there in the end. With that being said, I need to know from a programmatic perspective, has the administration changed its perspective in any way, shape, or form relative to ensuring that neighborhood based pre-K providers, who are star one and/or star two, or no stars, that they receive technical and administrative assistance to improve their quality? And the reason why I ask that question is, aside from the programmatic base, we, when we're thinking about the business and economic development side and the employment side, many of our home-based providers actually do live in the neighborhoods where they are providing their services. And so, with that being said, has any of that changed?
That is still part of the proposal, but two people are coming up who can answer it better than I can.
Yes, thank you for the question. That is an important part of the plan that we have put together in terms of making sure, in order for us to get, to increase the number of children going into seats across the city, we need to increase the number of three and four star providers across the city. So, an important aspect of our work will be helping to provide the technical assistance that no, you know, centers with no stars, one or two stars, to move over into at least the realm of Keystone Stars in, in the three or four star categories.
And to listen, just for the record, the reason why I ask that question is because you will find, again, particularly neighborhood based, neighborhood based early childhood providers on neighborhood commercial quarters, in residential blocks, up, up to six children, but just because they are available, it does not always mean that quality is offered, and there are a number of barriers that we've discussed in hearings about why, the amount of dollars that they can afford to pay their workers, the, the level of education. And so, what I don't want us to end up doing with this program is that we begin to simply direct dollars to three and four stars, and it's almost like we begin creating magnet schools, right? So, we end up having the masterment-like preschools throughout the city of Philadelphia, and the problem with creating magnets is there are not enough magnets to go around in all of our neighborhoods. So, I will hope that as we, you know, as a legislative body led by our president, along with the administration and the mayor, sort of work to hammer out the compromises, that we remember that we should not be creating magnet sort of preschools, but just trying to make sure that that quality is available in neighborhoods. And so, that's commercial quarters, along with home base, and not forget that many of the home base providers are African-American women, and that these are business owners. So, let's not forget the business perspective of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I'll say that I think our goal is to educate and equip individuals in our city to be the best that they can, to help them discover what their capabilities are. And for me, I clearly understand and agree with the discussion about K through 4. That I understand. I'd like to say that with limited resources, I am concerned that we have the resources, the vocational equipment, the opportunities, the art, the music, the technology, for young people who are making decisions about their lives. For people with good households, for children with good households, parents make good decisions for them. For many of the people that we're talking about, they don't necessarily have good decision makers in their lives, but they don't have good schools, they have poor performing schools. They will make the decision for themselves, their self-determination comes with their maturity and a realization of the situation, if there's a job for them, if there's education and training. So, when we talk about pre-K and we juxtapose that to a point where a, a young person says, I'm going to get my act together, and I look at this room, and I'm going to say, I think I see a lot of late bloomers. They didn't do well in first grade, second grade, third grade, I'm a guess, I could be wrong, but I was a late bloomer, C and D student in elementary school, I didn't get myself together until I got into law school. I was a late bloomer. I made a decision, as many people in this room did, they weren't A and B students or all A students in first and second and third grade. And a lot of people in our city who are struggling around, you know, making a future for themselves need the help, and I'm concerned that, you know, when we start focusing on three and four-year-olds who don't have self-determination, at the expense of not providing these choices, now, if you can come up with a sustainable way of funding schools, education, and choice, and add pre-K, I'm with you, but here's what I would say to that, at risk, like the Council President did, soda tax is a miniscule way of raising money, and it adds a lot of cost to, to people who are purchasing. Could I ask, what happened to the fact, for example, that every time someone goes through a red light camera, and we collect all this money, that it goes outside of our city? What happened to, once upon a time, when we tax and towed vehicles and gave them a, a ticket, that money was all insider? How many hundreds of millions of dollars of Philadelphia money is going to fund projects all throughout our state? So, I would challenge the administration to stop going after little bitty bits amount of money that are new taxes and new costs, and why don't you look at the revenues that we generate in this city that should be going to our city to fund our schools and our large projects, and to more completely deal with the lack of education, because we're not getting the money from Harrisburg.
So, I will, I will, I will tackle the education question. In terms of the impact that pre-K would have on three and four-year-olds, you would see that if children are in quality programs, their readiness to, for kindergarten and their readiness for reading. So, I mean, I can put on my former education principal hat for a moment and tell you that children that cannot read, often, if you look in schools and find out where you have a lot of disruptions, or the children, the children have deficits or gaps in their learning. Kindergarten sets the table, I mean, pre-K would set the table for that, so as children transition into kindergarten, they will be able to read and be prepared for that transition that's most important from third grade to fourth grade, when reading turns from learning to read to reading to learn. If we could address that with a robust quality program, expansion of quality programming for our three and four-year-olds across the city, and getting them at three is a key component to, ensuring that success, we would see an, an improvement in schools across the board. I feel very confident about that, and as someone that ran a school, I would understand the level of resources and interventions that would, that were once used for children to get caught up, can now be allocated and used in other places around the school. So, the investment, as Councilman Jones said earlier, to invest early is, is key to the long-term success, so it definitely would be a, a high return on investment for pre-K, quality pre-K across the city.
I appreciate the answer, and the spirit we talked about, of taking a week and a half to think about this, I'm just saying, I agree, K through 4, put the resources in, put the books in, put the computers in, put the art class, put all that stuff in there, do the pre-K too, but what I'm looking for is the hundreds of millions of dollars in revenues that we should be getting, that through a taking over of our parking authority is now going to fund projects everywhere outside of Philadelphia, and I don't think politically we should let that happen.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to work with you and talk to you about how to approach the General Assembly about changing those things. I mean, those are all things that were done at the state level, and we're happy to work with you on that.
And, and I, I think we should.
Happy to.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I went to public school, and so when I heard the rhetoric word three times, I went and looked it up, and it says eloquent orator. So, I guess that wasn't an insult, so I'm going to press pause too, and wait for a week and a half to find compromise at, at this level. So, at first, I pressed the button, I'm like, there it is, but I'm going to work with my colleague, my dear friend, to try to figure this out, and hopefully the math adds up and the kids get help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, that's it. Councilman Don? Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment this morning, I want to thank the Revenue and Finance and the mayor, we had a press conference this morning about the idea of possibly selling some of our delinquent taxes, specifically BUR taxes, and monetizing those, and we're going to look into that, and I don't know if you want to speak to that, Rob, but I think it's a great thing for the city to be taking those efficiencies in place, I just want to make sure I call that attention to you guys, so maybe you can just speak about that briefly.
I actually just wanted to thank you for all the help you've given us, you know, since you've been in office and even before, with kind of prodding us and giving us ideas and, you know, working together to come up with solutions, like, you know, selling business tax debt. So, we're going to do a feasibility study to see how we can do that, and hopefully that'll generate some revenue.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Unless you want to stay longer, Rob, you know, you look like you're having fun up there.
It's never enough.
Okay. If you really mean that, I worry about you. I understand the school district has been here this whole time, was sorry, I know you may have a, a short statement, I know that your issue has been addressed. Are you still here? Somebody from the school district here? There you are, okay. Would you like to come up, Ms. Burns?
Councilman O.
I'll just put this out there, because I'm not sure the answer either. The city asked the state to create an authority, that's the parking authority, the city put in The city put its parking responsibilities under the authority. I don't know that, that we need the General Assembly to take back the functions of the streets department. So I just lay that out there.
Okay, it's something that we can discuss, certainly, sure. Ms. Burns, hold, hold on one second. If I could ask everybody as you're leaving, please do it quietly, the hearing is still going. Thank you. Ms. Burns, I, I appreciate your patience. You've been here a while.
Certainly.
Please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council President Clark, City Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds-Brown, and council members. I am Fran Burns, Chief Operating Officer of the School District of Philadelphia. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today on Bill Number 160508 regarding a possible non-reusable beverage container tax. The school district provides breakfast, lunch, and dinner meals to all students daily at no charge to our students. That includes School District of Philadelphia students as well as charter schools who participate in our meals program. These meal services are funded by our participation in various state and federal meal reimbursement programs, and therefore, the School District of Philadelphia Food Services Division is fully funded through direct state and federal reimbursements, in fact, ninety-five percent federally funded, and currently operates as an enterprise fund. Under proposed Bill Number 160508, all milk products would be exempt from any non-reusable beverage container tax. This bill also defines a dealer as any person engaged in the business of selling in, selling at retail, and stipulates that the proposed non-reusable beverage container tax be subject to any dealer retail sales. Since the bulk of our beverage volume is milk products, and given the district does not meet the criteria for a retail dealer under the proposed bill, we believe passage of the proposed Bill Number 160508 would have little or no financial impact to the school district or to our ongoing ability to provide students daily breakfast, lunch, and dinner meals at no cost. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Council, Councilwoman School, Councilwoman Sanchez, do you have a question for?
Yes, I just wanted, one of the questions that Councilwoman Shirelle Parker had posed, and I know her staff did so yesterday was, and I wanted to ask Fran Burns, if she had any knowledge about the archdiocese parochial schools or the lunch programs because they're similarly reimbursed by the feds and the senate? Is there some sort of common designation so that if an exemption is going to be built in to capture those, that, that we can tie them into?
I don't know. I think they would have the same interpretation as us under the, the current legislation, but I don't know. I also don't know what percentage of their beverages are milk compared to other drinks.
They, they similarly have the same breakdown depending on the, because we have the streets programs that do, in some cases, breakfast and lunch or lunch and afternoon snack. I'm just wondering, in your reimbursement model, is this, is there a category that we can ensure that it gets captured? You don't need to answer that now, but it would be something that we'd be interested in receiving.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There being, appears to be no additional questions for this witness. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll get my script. And there being no additional business before this committee today, the public hearing on Bills Number 160172, 160176, 160508, 160509, Resolution Number 160180 will stand at recess until Wednesday, June eighth, at 2:00 PM, at which time we will reconvene in Room 400.